Good evening. I would like to call to order the Planning Commission's special meeting of September 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We're going to do a quick roll call. Jason Diebel and Nicole Davison are absent tonight, so we have seated Brian Baumback and Timothy Leduser as our alternates. So I'd just like to go. Tim, if we could start with you. Everyone, just do a quick roll call.
Tim, present.
Richard Gordon.
Kirk Scott.
Michelle Williams.
Tom Finney.
Brian Baumback.
Thank you all. All right. If everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, in two little pockets, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? No? Okay. Excellent. So there are some new faces here. Thank you. I appreciate you coming and being part of the local political process. We're going to go through the agenda, which is behind me, but I just want to call out that this next item on the agenda is public delegations. This is for anybody who wants to speak to us tonight about things that are not related to the public hearing. So we'll have the public hearing a little bit later on in the agenda, but public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about issues or concerns that they have that are not related to agenda items, referrals, applications subject to a decision by this commission, items that are going to be part of a public hearing, or items in litigation. So if there's anyone who came here tonight to speak about anything that would fall into category appropriate for public delegations, please invite you to speak up. All right, great. So I'm assuming we'll hear from many of you at the public hearing later on in the agenda. Moving into reports, do we have any communications?
You received none as well.
Okay. And Tim was our zoning representative.
Yes. I have a small report. It was a short meeting, ended at 7:52, which is unlike a zoning meeting. There was some public discussion about, there was a concern that somebody had about the new car wash being too close to an aquifer. She spoke out about that and asked that we could review and update the regulations requiring aquifer protection zone. There's a public hearing scheduled and an application for Joseph Pacilio Villanos for special permit for outside dining at 228 Flanders Road. The applicant was not present, so they tabled that. Mr. Mulholland made a report to the commission, and that was pretty much it. There looks like the second week of October, that car wash will be ready, according to Bill, and they have a new developer for 138 Boston Post Road. And I have the minutes from the meeting if anybody wants to see him.
Hi.
That's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thanks for going and thank you for your update. Our ex officio, Bill Weber, I don't think is here tonight, but we have a special guest.
Not special. I told Bill he could take the night off since I was coming for the item later on. Just a quick things, really good news. Giving Garden received a citation from the United Way. Over the last few years, they've raised over 19,000 pounds of food to be distributed to those in need in the region. It's a fantastic facility up there. If you've never had a chance to get up there to watch Bruce Cohen, Lisa Picarazzi, Liz Follie, they spend a lot out there. They teach us how to farm the right way, not using pesticides. It was really fascinating to see that. They also had an open house that was well-attended before that. Moving on, charter revision will be on the, our questions regarding the charter revision will be on the November ballot. That'll be a separate ballot you'll be handed. There'll be 11 questions on that. And next month, the town will be sending out a mailer that will specify what the questions are and the reasoning behind it. It cannot advocate either way for it. We have to be really careful with what we say in that mailer because it's just making people aware what the question is and not trying to, we don't want to, since you are using town funds for that, you're not allowed to, and rightly so, try to give anybody a reason to vote one way or the other. But that'll be coming out. Right now, the town clerk and the town attorney are reviewing those. Moving on, exit 74 and Route 161, you know, we all get the little alerts for the blast and so forth like that. There's about three weeks left of blasting for this year. So it's not over. It'll just be done for this year. We're taking very few, one complaint is all we've taken in Town Hall. I know some people were frustrated with a problem with the app regarding the notification, but I think that's been corrected. And it's a bit of an inconvenience. My son lives right down here. When the project started, I said, until this is done, I'm going to move in with, right then, I heard no.
[laughing]
You're not. But, you know, it is a bit of a, but here again, we know when it is, and I think it's been moving really smoothly and lots of communication. We had today a Yale Charrette study review over here. They were hired by Main Street with American Rescue Plan funds to what to do for the next phase of Main Street. And they came up definitely with five different hubs that need addressing or should be addressed and recommendations. The one thing that everybody seemed to focus in on on the meeting, there were several people from Main Street and Holly Cheeseman, other people, was taking the old police Dominion Building, see if we can get that, and then take our time figuring out what's the right thing to do with it. So Dominion has been really cooperative with that, so we'll be moving on that fairly quickly. On the 30th of this month is at McCook's, the Niantic Tribe will be having their Indigenous People's Day. They had it last year on Indigenous People's Day in October, but this year they've moved it up to the 30th. So it'll be a nice event. It was really well-attended last year. A lot of history about the Niantic Tribe, and we've also, that statue that we read about in the paper, it has been moved over to near where the playground is. So we have taken that. Some good things coming up. The Oyster Festival is this Saturday, as well as, I believe the Niantic 10K is also Saturday. The Oyster Festival is behind St. John's from, I believe it's noon to 6:00. It was really well-attended in the past. I would imagine it will be this year as well. And the proceeds of that go to the Miracle League. Sunday is at the VFW, the Cornhole Tournament. A lot of people participate in that, and it'll, all the proceeds from that will benefit the veterans. Everything there is, goes right to the veterans. That's it. Any questions?
I was wondering about the Yale Charrette. I know we referenced it in the Plan of Conservation and Development, too, because the old one, we really, like, checked off a lot of the boxes on that one, right?
Right.
Did they go kind of through that? Like, was there any?
They did, and what they've said is, okay, and the worst thing to do now is take the current one that we got today and put it in the draw to gather dust.
Yeah.
Because once it goes in a draw, it goes away. So they say get the low-hanging fruit first, and you're expanding, talking about parking. They addressed it right now. Really interesting. If you're driving down Main Street, there's so many curb cuts for people walking out, cars coming out. You can't see them because of the parking errors. They said there should be one funnel that drives everybody into one parking lot, making, and just by redoing the parking lines, you could do that, raising the intersection, the crosswalks up a little bit to where it's almost like a mini, not a speed hump, but where people have to slow down to get to them. And so they have some good recommendations. And one of the questions was, do we qualify for any funding? No, we're not a distressed community, but we might because the governor's looking at, Holly pointed out, some funding and some bonding for towns that want to do something that will draw economic, be an economic boom, which something like, you know, upgrading Main Street would be. Talks about a lot of things.
Awesome.
So it is, it'll be really good when it's actually finished and released. So.
Cool.
Any other questions? I'll be back to talk later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our planning director, Gary Gashell, has a few updates for us tonight.
The Samuel Smith architectural study, we retaining Chris Williams Architects, the contracts are being processed now, and then let's get it up to Kevin to sign. So hopefully that'll get underway within the next two weeks. And then I just also want to point out that we received two CGS 8-3A referrals that are not currently on the agenda from zoning. The public hearing is scheduled for October 19th, 2023, so that'll show up on our next meeting's agenda, as well as the, we've also received Hathaway Farm Subdivision from Kristen Clark PE, the applicant, Hathaway Farm LLC, the owner, for a three-lot, three-subdivision of approximately 4.83 acres of land, zoned RE40 Rural Residential, with a waiver request from Section 6-16 of the East Lime subdivision regulations. So that was received. Based on my discussions with Attorney Garrity, who's representing them, the date of receipt should end up being September, I'm sorry, September 9th, sorry, September 12th, 2023, based on our last regularly scheduled meeting, although we canceled it.
Right. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is before the 19th, right?
Yes, it should be October 10th.
Okay. So just a reminder for everybody, when the materials are posted about the zoning referral, if we could just all make some time to take a look at those prior to the meeting. I know sometimes when we are close to the zoning public hearing, we have not gotten our feedback to zoning in time. So if you review it and if we need anything, we can go.
Yeah, we'll get the material posted online, so you can have access to it, and then we'll get you the information by email as well.
Great. Excellent. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I do not have an update for the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Subcommittee this month, although the Yale Charrette is a good update. I'm glad that that is complete and hope we can get on execution of it. And no chairman's report tonight either. So can I go ahead and move into the acceptance of the meeting minutes from August 8th, 2023?
Show move.
Great. Anyone want a second?
Second motion.
Fantastic. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstained?
Aye.
Great. All set, Tim?
Rich.
Who's that? Rich.
Rich.
You made the motion, Chris.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So now we are going to open up the public hearing, which will discuss our proposed revisions and amendments to the East Lime subdivision regulations. So these include, but are not limited to Sections 4, 6, 8, 7, and 11. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, but before we have anyone come up to the podium, I just want to see if we have any exhibits to read into the record first.
Follow the items for the record. Exhibit A, the subdivision regulation changes themselves, draft. You'll see that is dated 9/19/2023 with a blank as far as the, page here. So they're set to be, just catch up, there we go. Set to be effective December 1st, 2023. Exhibit B, are this list of subdivision regulation changes. That's what I previously had up. It's here. And we have Exhibit C, a memo from E. Quinn to myself regarding road comments and water supply. Exhibit D is a memo from Bill Shear to myself regarding incomplete applications. Exhibit E, again, the subdivision draft changes, legal ad that was published in the 9/8/2023 and 9/15/2023 additions of the day paper. It reads as follows: The East Lime Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on September 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the East Lime Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider the following: Application of the East Lime Planning Commission to amend various sections of the East Lime subdivision regulations, including but not limited to Sections 4, 6, 8, and 11. Copies of the full text are on file in the office of the Town Clerk and the Land Use Office at the East Lime Town Hall. All interested persons are invited to attend this hearing. Michelle Weiss-Williams, Chairwoman. And then we have Exhibit F, is a memo from Mark Zamarca, the Town Attorney, to myself regarding the changes. And Exhibit G is another draft of the subdivision regulation changes with a red-lined markup to make it a little easier. One comment I got through this process. And Exhibit H are, again, the current subdivision regulations dated 2016.
Okay. So we have.
These are the current. I just wanted to point out that.
Oh, go ahead.
The current regulations were dated March 24th, 2016.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So as a group, we have reviewed and discussed these a number of times, obviously getting to here, but I do want to have a little bit of discussion, particularly on our new exhibits. If we could start with the email from Mark Zamarca. And I want to start with his first comment there about Section 4-2-15, requiring that property taxes be current at the time that an application is filed, or it will be deemed incomplete. What I'm gathering here is that this regulation would not stand up in court and should not be included, but I would love any background that was provided.
Sure, sure.
I mean, we can see what he wrote here, but I didn't know if there was any.
Any additional.
Any additional or anecdotal information that would be important.
Not significant, but I did follow up with Attorney Zamarca. Basically, the statutes enable municipalities to collect taxes. So I believe, the way I interpreted his response was that the town could potentially pass an ordinance that would support the collection of taxes prior to the making of the application for subdivision. So that's, I think, the direction we would have to go to do that.
Okay.
But as he explains here, there's no statutory authority for the regulations to require that property taxes be current in order to accept or approve the application.
All right. Any discussion on that item? Also want to look at Section 11-3 and Attorney Zamarca's recommendation that we not add fines for non-compliance or violations. I'd love some information on this because I think wetlands has fines.
Correct. There, that's statutory permissible, statutorily permissible under the statute. The regulations enable wetland agencies to impose fines, and we, again, do that through ordinance. So we did pass a town ordinance that enabled the agency to collect those.
So it's an ordinance that's then reflected in their regulations?
Correct. Essentially as a fine schedule. It literally forbade them.
Okay. So we're looking at two items that we'd need to address outside of the regulations. Any other questions, discussions, concerns about the content of Attorney Zamarca's memo?
I would note Section 4-7-2, his second comment, which allows the planning director to administratively approve, deny, or modify proposed lot line revisions. He indicates that Section 8-18 defines subdivision as the division of attractive land into three or more parcels, and a lot line revision by definition does not result in the creation of three or more lots, but instead adjusts the boundary between two existing lots. Deciding on a lot line revision is not in the commission's statutory authority and need not be reviewed by the commission. Yet, we were advised by an attorney during an application process that I did not have the authority to deny that application. It had to come before the commission, thus.
Was that because it was a, an already approved plan?
There was an already approved plan filed on the land record, and the proposed change was a change in a boundary, thus by definition, a lot line revision. However, it sat on my desk and waiting a change to be compliant with the regulations. And in that time, I decided to deny that application due to being incomplete, upon which I was told they were not finished with the application. I didn't have the authority to do that pursuant to the regulations. So I only point out that, well, maybe the, according to the town attorney, we don't, the commission doesn't have authority to do this, but yet we've written it into our regulations. And thus, that's what I'm following for lot line revisions. That being said, I think what we're proposing would be acceptable.
Yeah. So I feel like he's saying here, it doesn't need to be reviewed by the commission, but is he saying it can't be reviewed by the commission?
I think he's saying it doesn't need to be reviewed by the commission and that the change is adequate.
Okay.
Just noting that. It's kind of, it's a little gray. It's not super clear, but.
I understand. Okay. Anything else on the Attorney Zamarca? Okay. Moving next to the memo from Bill Shear, any questions or concerns with that?
He, his comment was, he liked what he saw, but he wasn't sure if it was, this would be possible or not, or if there was a way to classify an application as incomplete and unsubmitted at the staff level. I think that's what these regulations tried to do through.
With the checklist.
Checklist, and give the staff the ability to say it's incomplete, or the commission cannot accept it.
I'm comfortable with how we dress that, so I don't know.
And then.
Quinn?
The final comments from, or Quinn. He indicated, can roads be at least 20 feet wide to allow for fire apparatus to operate? And dead-end roads over 150 feet would need a turnaround for fire apparatus. In regards to water supply, he indicated, what happened when a subdivision puts in a cistern, fire pond, or private hydrant, all need to be maintained. For non-one and two-family properties, the fire code uses NFPA 25 to outline this, and the owner is responsible. However, if the developer leaves the open space to someone else, they need to know they are required to maintain these items, if these items are in the open space.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think those comments, well-welcome. I don't know that we can actually make significant changes based on the way the legal ad ran in regards to the road length. In Section 8, we talk about block length, and all we did was add CDD, the Conservation Design Development, to that requirement for block length. And the street lighting, full location and full cutoff. So I think this is a little outside the scope, but more than happy to work on some language with Eric and put something together to address that.
Can we just talk about the water supply comments for a moment? Because we have, not specifically for cisterns and fire ponds, but we have had this discussion with drainage pools and the maintenance. I don't think that this is something, his particular concern is something that would be appropriate for the regulations, because it seems more administrative. If the developer leaves the open space to someone else, they need to know they are required to maintain these items. What is your thought about whether or not that be in the, that would be more of a land transfer issue than a subdivision issue?
The way I interpret this is that the Fire Marshal has the ability under NFPA 25 to say, hey, the landowner's responsible to maintain that. Question is, I'm thinking here is maybe that the Fire Marshal's office doesn't know necessarily in every instance who the landowner is that's responsible to maintain that structure.
Got it.
Usually, I guess in an association situation, let's take a public road that I do know, Rocco Drive, has an association. They had a detention pond on their property that they were responsible for. They'd have to maintain it, although they don't. That's an example. But I would think he would be able to say, okay, you guys, the association has to maintain it, not the town.
Right. And those land ownership records will, would be part of the subdivision approval?
Correct. They should be a deed filed with the open space and such. I would think in the case where the detention pond or the structure was a public improvement, well, then we know clearly that the town's going to be responsible for it.
Okay.
Kind of a neat point there.
Are we comfortable with that approach? Okay. I had one final question of clarification before we open up the floor and before we finish up our discussion here. I want to make sure, and forgive me if this sounds dense, but I want to make sure that, especially what we're adding here, as well as what was already existing, is spelled out to apply to not only subdivisions, but re-subdivisions.
That's correct.
Okay. And can you point me to where we specifically say that, just so that I can make sure it is?
Applicable to both?
Yeah.
In the regulations themselves?
Yes. That the regulations themselves are applicable to both subdivisions and re-subdivisions.
Under Section 3, general requirements. 3-1, subdivision approval required. No cisterns in the land shall be made until a plan of cistern has been approved by the commission. And by, if I, right there, it requires the application. I know that says subdivision. You could add and re-subdivision there as well, but by definition, if you go back to our Section 2 and our definitions, the definition of a re-subdivision, I believe, would cover the division of land. Go back to the definitions if you like.
Yeah, I'm looking up the definition.
Definition of re-subdivision, a change in a map and of approved or recorded subdivision? Or re-subdivision if such change affects any streetlights on their own, et cetera. So we have the definition of that. We know from Section 3 that any subdivision requires, there's a definition of subdivision, division of tract or parcel into three or more lots. Back to Section 3.
Well, that's my concern, right? Three or more parts or lots. If you re-subdivide, you can skirt under that number while still creating that many lots.
Right. But if you, how can you skirt? On a re-subdivision, it's going to be the division of land that was previously recorded, on a map that was previously recorded. So I'm not sure how you can subdivide, re-subdivide and get more.
Say I have 100 lots. I carve 50 off.
But you have one lot, 100 acres.
Sorry, yes. I have one, I have one 100-acre lot. I take 50, I subdivide it, I take 50. Then I take that other 50 and I put it into two lots. I've now made a three-lot subdivision, but I've really made a subdivision and a re-subdivision.
Well, if you took the lot and you split it in half, that's a first cut or free split.
Okay, true.
Then when you go to divide either of those two halves, again, in either in half or further, that's a subdivision. Once that gets recorded, the division of any three of those tracks, let's say, of land, that would be left, would then be a re-subdivision.
Right. And I want to make sure that we are crystal clear, that everything that we're putting in here also applies to re-subdivisions, because we have specified it as something other than a subdivision in the definitions.
So why don't I suggest that we just include after the words subdivision in Section 3.1 and re-subdivisions.
Fantastic. How does this group feel about that? Okay. So, I'm, add re-sub in 3-1. Okay.
I also wanted to point out, Attorney Zemarka's comment regarding Section 4-15, because that's the other significant change, sort of what would have been section on the tax, collecting the taxes. 4-15, as you know, used to be a requirement that we have an environmental review team Attorney Zemarka's comments said that the existing 4-, which was previously 4-14-3, requires that certain subdivision applications be made subject to review by the Eastern Connecticut Environmental Review Team. We know from pending Twin Valley appeal that the ERT reviews are no longer being done for subdivision developments. Requiring compliance with the existing section results in the commission imposing a condition that cannot be met, which has been held to be an illegal act. For that reason alone, the existing section must be removed. The proposed section complies with the commission's statutory authority to consider public health and safety and environmental concerns. So, I'll get there quickly. So, we take section, the sections got renumbered, so we have Section 4-13, applicable commission agency reviews, and we have the inland wetland agency and the regional planning commission. Then we have the environmental review and evaluation, this is all replaces the ERT requirement. I'd be happy to read through it if you like, but basically, where the land consists of environmentally sensitive resources, such as wetlands, steep slopes greater than 25%, so we do specify that. Water courses, flood hazard areas, ridge lines, endangered species, or species of special concern, they shall be subject to environmental review and evaluation by the planning commission. And I put in here, the East Line Commission of the Conservation of Natural Resources. With that though, I would say we need to specify a timeframe in which they need to respond.
Yep.
So, that's something that we'll need to address, probably within, you know, like a 15-day window or 30-day window when the application's submitted. It's going to have to fit our statutory timeframe, I would highly recommend that. And then maybe put some language in there that indicates if we don't receive a report, it's kind of like 8-3A referrals, if we don't furnish a report to zoning, it's considered favorable.
Oh, right, so of natural resources, yeah.
So, we may want to consider that as well.
Yeah, I'm glad that you brought up this section, because something that I was curious about here as well is, I don't think we specify, you know, the developer obviously has to provide us with the materials for the environmental review, but do we have, kind of, what do we deem acceptable as an environmental review?
So, as we go on, again, and then this section says, it does not preclude the commission from requesting an environmental review for applications which do not meet the above parameters, but for which concerns about environmental impacts of the development and their property, proper, I'm sorry, there should be proper mitigation exists. But Section 4-14, two actions which may significantly affect the environment, we define that. It means individual activities or a sequence of planned activities proposed to be undertaken, which could have a major impact on the town's land, water, air, historic structures, landmarks, existing housing, or long, or other environmental resources, or could serve short-term to the disadvantage of long-term environmental goals. They shall include, but not be limited to, new projects and programs and any new projects supported by the state contracts and grants, but shall not include emergency measures undertaken in response to immediate threat to public health or safety, or two activities in which planning commission's participation is ministerial in nature, involving no exercise of discretion on the part of the town, department, institution, or agency. And then 4-14-3 requires that any business corporation who's going forward here, that may have significantly, actions that may significantly affect the environment, have to provide this environmental impact assessment.
Right.
And then, there's a number of items that are required for that submission.
Right, my question is, we've listed what's required, but do we need anything in here about who is, who, what entities we feel are credible to provide this information, right? So, I don't think we say in here, like, DEEP, an environmental engineer, I don't think we specify any, any standards for who is qualified to provide this analysis.
I would agree, so we could certainly do that.
Okay. I know we've been through these a million times, and I'm really sorry, but like every time, you see different things when you read it, so I don't mean to frustrate, it's just part of the process.
So, would this, would this also be like a report done prior to, or as part of the application, and be like one of those checklist items?
Yes.
So, this would all be done before the fact?
Yeah, if it has flood hazard areas, water courses, deep slopes, if it, if the subdivision fits the definition of 4-14-1.
Right, and then, and then we, we would, we don't have to formally ask them, the developers, to do this? This is all just part of the process then?
Yes, it would be required per every application. All right, if I scroll to the top here. So, if they would have to demonstrate that the land didn't have wetlands, steep slopes greater than 25%, had water courses, any flood hazard areas, was a bridge line, didn't have any endangered species or species of special concern, so they'd have to go through that process.
And is there anything else that we can reference in our own regulations, or those of our town's other land use commissions that kind of give us those parameters as far as specifying who's qualified to make this review?
So, Section 4-2-3C of our current regulations require biological survey, and it says, if conducted as a requirement of a natural diversity database review, and/or any recommendations from DEEP, this was actually DEEP, for avoiding or minimizing impacts to specials, to species of special concern in significant natural communities. So, I think this goes a little bit beyond that. Again, that's the closest we get to anything in our regulations that's specified a professional who should be preparing such a report. So, I think if we just specify, this would probably be a good spot to indicate, and maybe we go back at some later date and add some language to that biological survey as well, as to who should be performing that.
Is that something that is a material enough change that would require us to open another public hearing? Is that, we can't add that now?
We probably could, I don't think it's that substantial of a change, it'd be, it's clarification.
I'd prefer if we're going to put it in the regulations to make it clear if we've identified a confusing point already. Okay. What else from the commission before we hear from others? Okay. Good, all right. So, at this time, if anyone would like to speak as part of the public hearing, please feel free, just ask that you state your name and address, and you might need to spell your name for our recording secretary if she asks, so please.
Good evening. My name is Brian Lipkowski, 27 Green Valley Lakes Road. Many of you are familiar with me as the intervenor in the Twin Valley subdivision application, which I have a sneaking suspicion is what has prompted several of the matters on tonight's agenda, primarily regarding 4-14 and pretty much anything that has to do with the ERT. The primary reason for my intervention began seven years ago, when I learned that a regulation designed to protect and screen my home from future development had been reinterpreted by town council to favor a developer who then persuaded the planning and zoning commissions to do the same. I attempted to amend that regulation in March of 2018 and close the loophole that was so clearly being exploited, and went through tremendous effort and expense to do so. In the end, I was dismissed as self-serving, opposed by several developers who attended that meeting, and I was even cautioned off the record by the former first selectman, hi you Kevin, for attempting to amend a regulation under pending litigation, of which there was none at the time the applicant had withdrawn. The regulation amendment that I was attempting to make was not only to protect my home, but for any others that might find themselves in that same position in the future. I was also attempting to provide more power and control to the planning and zoning boards, who bound by their regulations are often faced with difficult decisions and easily coerced by council to often take the path that is not necessarily in the best interests of our town, but rather the best interest of avoiding a lengthy appeal and litigation process. And that's exactly what's been happening for the last seven years regarding Twin Valley. This process is almost always the result of regulations that are ambiguous, and thus able to be easily challenged in court by an applicant. Fast forward to tonight, and here we are, suspiciously amending a regulation not to serve the best interests of our town, its residents, or the environment, but rather to suit the desires of that very same developer. The ERT requirement as it stands in the regulations today is a regulation that is currently being proven very difficult to challenge in court by an applicant, that same applicant who seeks a large-scale and impactful development in our town. The ERT provides significant and meaningful protection to our town, which finds itself lately under the constant threat of overdevelopment with minimal substance to defend with. This proposed amendment seeks to remove what little substance remains, and is a step in the entirely wrong direction, in my opinion. You are all sitting on this board tonight, dedicating a significant amount of your free time and energy in the efforts to make positive changes to our town, and for that, I can't thank you enough. However, approving these amendments only seeks to add more ambiguity, further reducing your power, the means for protection of our town, and increasing the likelihood for more potentially impactful and large-scale development in the future. Because of this, I urge you to reconsider the proposed amendments for Sections 4-14, and carefully review every line that's there, seeking, looking for any of those potential loopholes which can and most likely will be exploited. Anything that would be, any less than equal or better than the ERT in place would be the guidepost for that. Any amendments to be considered should be bolstered and strengthened on what is already there, and I would strongly caution against removing any language. A couple of questions that, you know, currently remain unanswered, and, you know, Michelle, I see you asking a lot of those questions, and, you know, getting into that right direction, and I really appreciate the thoroughness that you're considering here. But the, what standards are to be used in making this evaluation? I think that is the most critical aspect of what remains unanswered, is we really haven't defined clearly who's making this evaluation and how it's going to be done. The second question, because currently as the language stands, it tends to put a little bit more in the planning commission, and to that I respectfully add, you know, is the planning commission qualified to conduct an environmental evaluation? Because that's sort of what the language that's in place right now is alluding to. So, that is pretty much all that I have to add, and, you know, I appreciate all of your efforts and all of your work on this, and I really hope that if you are going to make any changes, they will be made only to strengthen and bolster the position. As they currently are written right now in the proposal, I feel the opposite. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you so much, and if you have one for our recording secretary, Sue Spang, that would be fantastic.
My name is Harvey Beaman, and I reside at 11 Green Valley Lakes Road in East Lime. I am also a member of the Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources in town. Although I am a member of the CCNR, I am not speaking tonight, I am speaking tonight solely as a resident and not on behalf of the CCNR. I'd like to call your attention to the wording of Section 414-1, which Brian was just talking to, review and evaluation, which appears on page 31. The basis of this paragraph is currently reflected in 414-3, environmental review team evaluation, also on page 31 of the current subdivision regulation revised through March 1, 2016. My concern for the revised wording is as follows. It lacks any specificity as to when the paragraph would or would not be applied. Does it apply to small subdivisions as well as large ones? For example, if a large lot has a small area of a steep slope, would that require an ERT? Similarly, would a small, two-lot subdivision require the same level of an ERT as a large one? Are all wetlands, water courses, and flood hazard areas defined in East Lime records? Who makes the decision as to determination when this requirement is applicable to a subdivision? Is it the planning commission, or perhaps the applicant, or the developer's lawyers? It could be read any way. In my opinion, the wording could apply to any and all subdivisions, or conversely, none at all, and that would be a great concern. The section that's being revised, is being revised, in part because of the time and planning needed to provide a thorough review by any group, such as the Eastern Connecticut Review Team, which now appears to be consolidated as the Connecticut Environmental Review Team, located in Haddam, Connecticut. Are they dropped from, due to time pressure, dropping out any other outside agencies?
Can you clarify that question?
So, the question is, are we taking the wording out and not substituting it with the Connecticut Environmental Review Team, because we're doing it due to time pressure?
Oh, okay.
We want to get an accelerated review and not...
I understand your question now, thank you.
And that's all I have?
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think we have to wait, it's not really a conversation, it's more us listening.
No, okay, thank you.
I would go through all the public comment first and then deliberate on that.
Thank you.
We can't, thank you. I think we've been pretty nice. If anybody is nervous? Okay, just listening? All right. So, okay, great.
My name is Diane Lipkowski, and I live at 27 Green Valley Lakes Road. I just want to say something brief. I obviously agree with everything Brian said, and I just want to note that whatever you guys do put in place, if you are going to remove what's currently there, that it would be unbiased. You know, if the developer or whoever's applying has to pay for this review, that their third party is, you know, not going to bend with what is going to benefit the application, that they're going to, you know, be neutral. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Sinclair, I live at 78 Spring Rock Road. So, in listening even to what others have said, I think some of this is duplicative, but, you know, Michelle, when you started, I think even just your review of 4-14, like, speaking to the vagueness of it, of who's, who's actually going to... like speaking to the vagueness of it, of who's actually going to complete this, these reviews, like jumping off of what you said, I don't understand how it could be unbiased if it's funded by the developer, how you could even ensure that bias wasn't introduced into it. And I just want to also understand the rigor and the credentialing, or what allows people from the planning commission and the Conservation for Natural Resources within the town to be properly educated and credentialed to make these assessments themselves.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark Lipkowski. I guess you're at the Lipkowski Show tonight. Mark Lipkowski, 13 Rose Lane, East Lime, Connecticut. I agree with all the comments that have been said. But the one thing that I was wondering about in consideration of the wording changes, has the town done any benchmarking with other towns? And what they are doing with regard to this? Because there may, we may be just reinventing the wheel, which has maybe, and already been discussed and reviewed with enough detail to ensure that you get a unbiased and independent decision when making these kinds of decisions around subdivisions. So, just something to think about.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no other comments, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Do you want to have any deliberation on those comments?
Do we, can we do that afterward?
You can, just before you close the public hearing. Because once you close it, you can't take any more testimony. So...
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So if we want to make...
So let's open it up for discussion then, while the public hearing is still open, rather than closing the public hearing and then discussing. In case we have any questions that would require more information.
If you wanted to make changes, then the public's going to have to have an opportunity to weigh in on this.
Totally understand. All right. I think I have a few things that I would like us to discuss. And I definitely want to hear from others as well. First off, I just want to clear up two things about kind of who pays. On every application that comes before this commission, the onus is on the applicant always to provide the materials that meet the burden of showing the application falls within the regulations. So, I just want to be clear that this is not a new thing, with exception of, of course, comments from town staff, engineering review from town staff, legal review from town staff, you know, fire, as we have talked about in many cases in the past. So I just wanted to kind of address that one right off the bat then. An ERT previously would have been coordinated and completed and paid for by the applicant.
Well, my, I'd have to go back and see how things were done years ago. And it's been a while. But my understanding is that according to the environmental review team, the municipality has to request it.
Has to request it, but who?
And then I think they undertake it. I'm not sure who pays for it.
Okay. But we haven't had one in decades. Because that leads to my second thing that I just wanted to clear up for everybody, which is... I would love some head nodding and consensus. I don't believe that the intention of this commission is to remove the ERT to make the regulations more development-friendly. Our removal of the ERT is because the ERT is no longer available to us as a tool to use. So spelling out these additional environmental requirements that were previously part of the ERT is currently our only way to accept and evaluate environmental impact data as part of a subdivision. Right now, if someone were to apply for a subdivision, our regulations state that they need to do an ERT. They, the ERT group is no longer performing those for municipalities. So we cannot require it. And we do not have any replacement language in the regulations that allow us to consider environmental impact testimony at all. I just want to make sure that that's how I'm understanding it. So I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page there.
Yep, correct.
I agree with that too. I mean, we could have just struck it from the subdivision regulations entirely. But we talked about it and we decided that's probably not the best thing to do. So it was an attempt to come up with the next best thing.
Planning commission would be an option in case we don't get, weren't able to get any, anything from the environmental group.
It gives us environmental data to consider. Whereas right now in an application, we do not require any environmental data of this substance because the ERT cannot be completed.
Yeah, we require a biological report, an archaeological study.
But not to this level.
But not to this level.
All right. And I definitely think we heard from our public hearing participants, which thank you all for coming and speaking. I know that it takes a lot out of your night and can be a little unnerving. So I really appreciate everybody who came here and did that. And I think what we heard is something that we had discussed earlier, which is that the regulations kind of need some guardrails on who is and is not capable of providing, you know, the materials for this environmental review. But I don't, I don't think that, I think we can set a standard of, you know, qualifications of who we deem environmental professionals. But I would be very hesitant to name a specific organization again at risk of running into the situation that we're currently in now.
Yeah, I'm thinking to address that, something like a wetland scientist, soil scientist, biologist, someone who's got some sort of certification in a particular field, area would be appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll look at that. Another thing about kind of how are we as planning commissioners, you know, credentialed, capable of reviewing this information and making a reasonable decision? And I would say that I completely understand that concern. However, that is the structure of town-elected boards and commissions. And we are not engineers and we are, you know, or some of us.
Yeah.
We are, you know, we are volunteers.
I would say the boards and commissions are typically made up of laypeople. That being said, they rely on their town staff for reviewing the applications. In regards to environmental review that you would require, you would have one of those professionals provide it to you. Obviously, you have to exercise discretion as to whether you believe them or not. And that's at the end of the day. So I think...
And that's the case with things not environmental as well.
Correct. And the authority that you're given is through the statute, which Attorneys of Market indicates that you have the statutory authority to consider public health, safety, and environmental concerns. How you effectuate that is going to be up to you and that would be through these regulations. And that would be the only remedy, if you will, or credentialing that you have, is to require that the people providing those reports to you are credentialed. That being said, I want to point out Section, Appendix E is our fee schedule. And within it, 2.1.5 of that fee schedule has a line item for professional legal consultations, actual cost. So that would be basically a pass-through line that we would collect fees so that if we wanted to hire our own professional consultant to peer review the applicant's work, we can do that.
And we're empowered to ask for that?
Yes.
Yeah. So those kind of three, you know, guideposts, the definition of who is competent and capable to provide an environmental review, our authority through the statutes to evaluate such review, and also our kind of sanity-checked safety net of another commission, the Commission on Natural Resources, makes me feel comfortable that we have built a pretty thorough review process. And that's what I was hoping we could kind of discuss around the table at this time to make sure that, you know, if there are any concerns, if we don't think that's enough, you know, let's talk about that now.
I certainly can add more language to this section. I guess in terms of assessing other towns, obviously, I don't necessarily like to reinvent the wheel either. So this language does come from several of the towns. It's a mix and match of that language. But I have plenty more if you want to see it. I can certainly come up with it and...
Yeah, and I think we've looked at that as part of the process.
Yeah, I think we scratched some of it, but we can add it back if you want to.
The fee schedule you talked about, that's Appendix, what?
Appendix E.
Do you think maybe we should reference that up in where we talk about the review in Section, opposed Section 4, whatever? And like, because it doesn't say, I mean, if it were clear in reading that section, that it would be a little more removed from the developer side of things. It might, might...
I would say we'd have to just indicate that the commission may impose a fee for peer review of your environmental report.
I agree.
And the other thing is the timelines for doing these sort of reviews. Like to do the kind of study a professional would do, it's not like a, you know, these are long-term kind of projects that would take, you know, a significant amount of money to undertake. So the timeline for doing an independent third-party review is going to, it could potentially cause us to have to act earlier or ask for it earlier or something.
Well, let's talk about that too, because that gets to another one of the concerns raised by one of our speakers tonight, which is who does this apply to? And the way I read it, this is a part of a complete application. So the application is not deemed complete and ready to review by this commission until this has been completed. Is that correct?
Correct, short of them not having to provide it. So if they're able to demonstrate that the parcels, parcels, parcels being subdivided do not have any wetlands, steep slopes greater than 25%, watercourses, flood hazard areas, ridge lines, endangered, or species of special concern, then it wouldn't apply.
That's very little of the remaining land in town that would not hit one of those?
I suspect there are properties out there that this would not apply.
Okay. All right. And then let's talk about that. Do we, I mean, the burden is on the developer to provide reasonable evidence to support that those features are not on their lot? Do we spell that out? How do we determine?
The question is how we determine if those features exist?
How do we determine if the, yeah, how, so, so I've got my, you know, 100 acre lot.
Site plan should outline it, like that would be part of a normal site plan.
Yes.
Right. You would see that the wetlands are delineated or not. They would, soil scientists say that none present on the property.
So then at that, at that point, should we find a site plan that includes wetlands, steep slopes, you know, and the environmental impact information has not been provided, we then deem the application incomplete and allow the applicant to withdraw pending completion of the application, like we would with anything else?
Correct. They could withdraw and resubmit.
Yeah.
You would, you would, you say you can withdraw, resubmit, or we're going to deny it without prejudice?
Okay.
But it would be part of a checklist, I don't...
Yeah.
Correct.
So if they, if they can't check all the boxes, it's not a complete application?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I would, 4-14-1, as compared to the current language, I would say the current language specifies a specific number of lots, 20. So you may want to continue to do that. But I think this is broader than that.
I do too. To the concerns raised in this room, I think that this is actually more empowering to the commission.
It's going to cover smaller lot subdivisions.
Yeah, it's any subdivision.
Of which we've received numerous over the last 10 years.
Yes.
Versus something larger than I think, I don't think we've gotten a subdivision over 10 lots, with the exception of Twin Valley.
So I think maybe one of the things that's causing some confusion in here is that last sentence of 4-14-1 that says, "This requirement does not preclude the commission from requesting an environmental review team evaluation." I think we just need to name it the same thing that we're calling it below, an environmental impact assessment. Because the ERT is what is the hang-up now. So it would read, "This requirement does not preclude the commission from requesting an environmental impact assessment for applications which do not meet the above parameters, but for which concerns about environmental impacts of the development and their proper mitigation exist." So this is empowering us even when we don't see wetlands, steep slopes, watercourses, flood hazard areas, ridge lines, endangered species, but we think that there's something that needs to be looked into, we can still request the environmental impact assessment as part of the application. I think that might just be a typo on the naming of it from...
Okay. I mean, I could certainly make that change and I don't think that would...
I have a question about that. Because at that point, if it's at the commission's discretion, presumably we've already had the application. So what, are we, if we say that we want that review after the application's been accepted?
Because that, this, that last sentence is the current language.
Yeah. That's why I think we need to change the words environmental review team.
To environmental assessment.
To environmental impact assessment. So here's where I can see it going, Kirk, is we look at the site plan, we say, okay, there's no wetlands, steep slopes, watercourses, all these things, right? And someone comes to public hearing and says, there's endangered species on this property. You know, I have witnessed it, whatever. Then we have a mechanism to request something that would not be on the site plan. My...
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel like you're wailing, but I want to know why. Because this is our held-me-to-be.
Only, well, only because, my only, like, worry about that one is, is like, we're bound by a calendar when we accept these things. So what do we do then if we say that there is a spotted, oh, something, whatever, species that lives there that's nearly extinct? That it takes a long time and a lot of, like, I'm not saying it's not important, because it is important, but like, given our timeline for how we have to handle these applications, would we be able to say, would we be able to say right then if we had a suspicion, okay, stop, go do this, do we go do this study to find out if this species really is there? Do we, what do we do with the application at that point? Does it get timed out? Does it...
You would probably end up in a situation where you're requesting an extension from the applicant to, you know, grant the commission an extension of time to conduct a public hearing so that they may complete their study. If they want their approval, they're going most likely to do that. The, which I certainly understand, is if you get going in an application and you're two months into it and you've got to either close a hearing or conduct one, and you're just discovering now that there might be something out there, that's where you may have to determine that the application is in fact incomplete. Deny it, maybe deny it with... Deny it, maybe deny it without prejudice. If there's not enough time left, let's say you ate up all your extension time, and you didn't have enough time to do the study. At some point, the developer is going to say, "I'm done, I can't, I'm out of time to submit." The agency, the commission, has to recognize that as well. So there is a window of time in which they have to work. I would hope that the regulation, that they would read this and say, "Okay, that's something I have to do and verify before I make my application," because it is going to take six months, or, so it's all part of their pre-planning, just like they have to go hire a surveyor, that takes time.
Right.
Test pits, all of that pre-preliminary work that they do. Certainly, there is still the pre-meeting with staff that we require, so hopefully in that process, staff can point this out to them, that this is a concern of the commission's, that they're going to have to demonstrate either exists or doesn't, and what their, the impact of their development is on that.
So the other way to mitigate this, though, would be to require it for everybody, if timeline is a concern, and you think that the commission would be pressured into making a decision?
It's not that I'm worried about the timeline in itself, it's that if we're asking for something that just can't be done, similar to what the ERT was in the beginning, then we're in the same spot.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
So that, that's my point. I'm not, I'm not worried about the timeline, per se.
So I think that leaves us then with the two solutions. One, leave the requirement as-is, knowing that the commission is empowered to ask for it, and if the commission determines that we needed that information and did not get it on time for the application, then we can deny without prejudice. Or we require it for everybody, regardless of land sensitivity.
Again, if you don't get it, and you deny it as incomplete, you have to, yeah, you'd have to make some statement on the record that that was necessary for you to make your decision, and that it wasn't in the record.
That leads me to believe that it might be cleaner to require it for everyone.
That's, there's nothing wrong with that, obviously, I mean, it may be a little burdensome for one- and two-lot subdivisions, but those one- and two-lot re-subdivisions are of 50-plus acres. Larger, you know, block subdivisions, then that would be a very, so, I mean, you can cover yourself by just applying it for every subdivision. And the report's going to be, you know, bigger or smaller accordingly.
But it wouldn't necessarily be every subdivision or re-subdivision, it would only be ones that have the steep slopes, the...
The way it's currently written, but Michelle suggested we change...
I'm saying, make it a requirement for everybody.
Across the board, with every application. Certainly makes sense.
That way, we're presented with the evidence right up front, without determining if we need evidence.
It simplifies the application process, in that they have to do it.
But also gives us more information. I don't want to make it sound like, oh, we're making it easier, we're not.
I certainly, it takes away the gray area of, are we going to require something additional or not? And I think, from the developer's perspective, is that that would be appreciated. I want to know what's expected of me before I go.
Yeah.
Right? Because I know if my application meets the regulations, the commission's required by statute to approve it. So that's, that's what they're anticipating. So I think, if I, if I know ahead of time, do I need to do this? Is this going to be a cost anchor as part of my development costs? Yeah, I want to know upfront.
I see this as like a double-edged sword, really, because if we require for everybody, then anybody who goes to get a re-subdivision that doesn't have steep slopes, watercourses, or anything, they're going to have to do it too.
Right, they'll do a review, it should be quick, sweet, to the point.
But, but depending, to what level is this review going to, we need to nail down exactly what...
That gets back to who provides that information.
So, so if we're talking about professionally credentialed, thorough review for every time anybody subdivides, that would mean maybe no development in town ever.
I don't think that's true, because we require professional credential evaluations for subjects at every subdivision, or drainage, or...
I would say the regulation doesn't speak to the fact that even if there is an impact, it doesn't mean the commission has to deny the application. I mean, the, in the wetland agency can approve applications where there's irretrievable losses. It's spelled out in the statute, so the same thing would exist here. This is for you to view and evaluate and make a decision, okay? Is it, maybe the impact is too great, and you choose to decide it. Maybe the impact is minor, nominal, and you choose to approve it.
And a small subdivision on dry, flat land is going to require a much less burdensome review. It will be quicker for the applicant, just by nature of the land.
But I think we still have to specify, who do we want that review to come from?
Right.
Right? An ecologist, herpetologist, or do we want all of these professionals to weigh in? Or should we come up with some general language that says, you know, you say if it's as applicable, or, then you're still leaving it out to the discretion of the commission to determine, kind of, okay, I'm going to wait for my first meeting to find out, who do you want me to hire?
But then we can require a peer review as well.
Right. So I think if we specify ahead of time, who's doing this, they'll know, review, and then you can, you want a peer review of that report.
Right.
So I can make a list of professionals that would be adequate to do those types of reviews?
Yeah.
Sure, can I ask a question?
Please.
So, you know, maybe in, as part of the application process, you could have like an environmental impact assessment form that they had to fill out, and they, they could say, "No flood areas, no ridge lines, no watercourses, et cetera," essentially, kind of filter them out of the need to do an assessment as part of the application process. And if they found they had ridge lines, for example, they knew they would have to do something. But my question is, is it, is there some process to do an environmental review? Because if we say, "We need to do an environmental review," and they say, "All right, what do I do?" Is there some kind of a reference process?
Yeah, there is a reference to an environmental impact statement to follow, and I have that language.
Okay, is that something, is there a reference in here?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we spell out in 4-14-3, what needs to be included in that environmental impact statement, even though we don't kind of spell out the methodology. I would say, though, that if we're concerned about, you know, getting information late and already into the application process, and determine that this does need an environmental impact study, when we're already in there, that would, a checklist ahead of time might just be the same in practice as what's written here. And if we have those concerns, I, I might be more comfortable just making it applicable to all subdivision and re-subdivisions.
If I might interject, I mean, 4-14-1 kind of already has a little checklist in that first part anyways, as to what would pertain to being environmentally sensitive.
Yeah, I think the concern that was being raised earlier by Kirk is, okay, so we, the applicant comes to us, and on the site plan, we see that there are no wetlands, steep slopes, watercourses, but we can't really get at a site plan this endangered or species of special concern. So how do we know if they're there?
Well, again, section five required, 4C. Yeah, section 4-2-3, design reports, what we currently require. We require a natural, cultural resources and site analysis plan, and then as we go down, an archaeological survey, the biological survey, and again, if conducted as a requirement of a natural diversity database review. So hopefully, I mean, I would feel better if that said something like, a natural diversity database review is required, because you'd want to do that to determine if there are any endangered species or species of special concern. Again, a soil scientist report if one has been prepared, traffic report, and a pesticide report, sanitation report, water supply report, stormwater management, open space report. Again, it's just a report, doesn't say by whom should be preparing.
You're right. But 4-2-3 does require them, even before the environmental impact report, to identify...
Areas of archaeological, unique scenic features, landmark and asset trees, any areas identified in the state and federal list. Oh, there it is, species of natural communities map indicating possible presence of endangered species.
So then, this brings me to two separate viewpoints. One, section 4-2-3 gives us reasonable assurance that section 4-14, two, 4-14-1, rather, by completing the requirements in section three, if you get to 4-14-1, you've already identified all of those things that we listed out here, so like, you're comfortable knowing whether or not the project is going to touch any of these specifically listed areas, so that's one viewpoint. Second viewpoint is, if you have to do that, natural resources inventory in section three, why not just do the environmental impacts study as well, because you're looking at a lot of the same stuff?
Pretty much. And I'm also looking at the checklist here that we also are proposing in the back, under proposed conservation design development subdivision plan set, and you've got basic information that's required, but the whole overall development plan, and then it gets into vegetated cover map, soil series, the location of primary constraints as follows, wetlands, watercourses, 100-year flood zones, velocity zones, coastal habitat features, areas within the easement of a high voltage power line or other utility, areas proposed to be used as part of a public or private way, burn-up pool delineations, historical, archaeological sites, and secondary constraints, again, where the slopes exceed 25 percent as determined through a required topographic survey, significant trees, location of stone walls, again, vistas, places where residents or visitors can experience views of culturally significant landscapes, location of ledge or rock and boulder outcrops, any other easements or encumbrances, location of even trails.
Go ahead, Rich.
No, I think...
I was just wondering if we could take a quick break.
Okay. It is 8:23. If we could just take a break until 8:30, is that okay? And revisit this.
Pause.
We're going to resume our public hearing and discussion where we left off. There is no switching seats here, Ms. Fairchild. She's an alternate, I'm not just picking on her. Okay, as we left off, we were talking about the items on the checklist that kind of apply already to some of the things that we are saying that we need to address here. So I think, I want to just go through and summarize where we are as of now, and what we still need to discuss and/or decide. As far as changes, first thing was adding re-subdivisions to the definition of subdivision, or to the requirements of the application as listed at the top of section three, dash That we already discussed and had consensus on. Second thing was the removal of those sections identified by attorneys Amarko, which I think may have already been addressed, which would be section 11-3 and 4-2-15, both of which would have to be addressed instead by ordinance. So that would be striking those and proposing an ordinance to the Board of Selectmen. Then that brings us to the meat of our discussion tonight, which has been centered around section 4-14, and I need to get that in front of me, so that I can reference it properly. Thank you for your patience. So where we left off, we were talking about section 4-14-1, and whether we need to, we do need to make an adjustment to remove where it says ERT evaluation, because that is no longer available to us, and we want to replace that wording with environmental impact assessment. I think what we were also determining is whether we are comfortable with the language as-is, as far as what lands might be exempt from this based on their lack of wetlands, steep slopes, watercourses, flood hazard, you know, as those are going to have to be reviewed and identified in an earlier section of our regulations. Or do we want to adjust to make this review and evaluation applicable to all subdivisions, regardless of land quality and species habitat? That's where I'm looking for some feedback.
Well, I think we should, we should refer to the earlier section here for, in the checklist of what we need as far as what's on the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should refer to that in 14, I'm sorry, 4-14-1, to kind of clarify what we need exactly.
So are, am I interpreting your feedback correctly as what we require on the site plan is adequate to inform whether or not the environmental impact assessment is required per the current wording of 4-14-1?
Yes.
Okay. So you're comfortable leaving it as-is?
Yes.
Okay. Rich?
I think, I don't know, it seems to me simple, simpler, easy for the developer, with all the applicants that require for every application, so it might be more confusion when they have the specific requirements, what, you know, what is required, so...
Okay. Kirk, where do you think you lean?
I think if, if we have a checklist, and we can agree what the checklist is, and who's able to say whether or not the checklist is accurate, I think if we can agree on that, then I would be okay with having, having it, so that based on this checklist, results of, you know, kind of scoring such a checklist, whether or not you would really need the ERT. But, that's my thought.
Yep, makes sense. Tom?
Yeah, checklist.
Checklist, okay.
I mean, put it in there, so...
I like, I like the idea of having all applicants go through this process, and I was wondering if it might be better to bring 4-14 under section 423, include that as part of the design reports. as part of the design reports, maybe put it in the end, because once you've gotten through all those reports, you're gonna have basically all the information you need to evaluate if you need to do an environmental review or not.
But you... Do I understand what you just said earlier, that you would want the environmental review to apply to everyone, or just the people?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, we wouldn't be determining if one is needed, because it would be needed for everybody?
Right. And it would... I thought it would be if we put it under design reports, so all applicants have to do all of this. And then, one of the requirements is an environmental review evaluation, in which they would have most of that information to determine if that was needed or not. It's almost kind of like a checklist going through all this stuff, lead you to that.
All right, I understand what you're saying. Let's put a pin in that and let's make sure we're clear on this paragraph, and then we can decide if we want to move it. So I'm hearing three votes for leave it as-is as to who it applies to, and two votes for make it apply to everyone. I tend to be of the mind of make it apply to everyone, but then that ties us up. So, you know, I want this to be kind of an open and transparent process here. I think both options are very much better than what we currently have, so I just want to baseline with that.
Yes.
I think in either case, if it applies to everyone, through the process of the checklist, we can go through and determine whether or not any of these environmental resources exist on the site. And if they do, well, maybe they need for a study. We also have a section in our current regulations, 4-2-15, other data and information may be required from the applicant order established as proposed, so there's a plausible requirement to regulations, anything that the commission needs necessary to make a decision. So, you have some authority to request. But I do think that in either case, if you make it applicable to all subdivisions, certainly clear that you want some sort of impact statement. But again, if there are no resources, well, the impact statement's gonna stay. There should be some sort of impact for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
What? And sort of a no-build alternative, there's all the...
Right.
That's good or bad.
Would anyone be extremely opposed to making this apply to everybody?
No.
I wouldn't be extremely opposed to it. I'd just worry that it would get stricken down, you know, from either a cost, or a timeline, or a legal issue.
How though? I mean, like...
Well, we're requiring an environmental report be submitted.
At the application start.
The onset of the application, with the application. That's no different than the sanitation report, give your test tips ahead of time, make sure you have a favorable review, don't wait until you submit your application, because they're never gonna get it done. It's gonna take a report. You know, before they get a review back. So...
Well, it is part of the process anyway, then.
And then after, you know, under the current regulations, put together some sort of environmental review for, you know, the natural resources map, and all these subdivision reports. Again, not specifying who parrots.
Right, which we're gonna get there.
Not opposed to it.
I think certainly, like I said, I think part of subdivisions to do it, certainly simplify the application process.
Yeah, I agree.
And just illustrate the need to staff.
All right. So, for now, let's... And, you know, we all have the opportunity to vote, you know, when we choose to adopt or not these revisions. So for now, let's update 4-14-1 to remove the part that says where the land to be subdivided consists of da-da-da-da-da-da, so that it just says subdivisions shall be subject to an environmental review. And then continue on. I also think we talked about putting a timeline in here for the commission of... Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. What is our timeline when zoning requests our review?
They hold a public hearing, so we have roughly about two weeks. We time it so it's three, then we receive the report. This is approximately... I would certainly recommend maybe adopting language that if you don't get it in the public back, that it's okay.
Do they meet on a reasonable schedule, too?
Yes, they meet once a month.
Okay. And staff can take care of making sure it gets on their agenda, doing the referral?
We would make it part of the application process internally, and it would just be automatically.
Do you have some language that we can borrow for that 30-day review period and lack of decision indicates acceptance? I think we already have that written. I mean, for us.
In the...
When we get a zoning referral.
Yes, it's in the statute, so... part two or after the hearing shall be taken as a public...
But we don't always require a public hearing.
Okay, it could be a letter or something, some sort of memo.
Prior to our... Decision? Like we would do staff comment? Prior to...
Decision.
Decision, yeah.
Vote, or...
I'm wary, because if you say prior to decision, yeah, I get it, but our applicants have time to rebut it, or respond to it in any way.
So, how do we do it for, like, town engineer, let's say? The application is submitted, everyone internally who needs to review it, reviews it and has to get back to us by the time it's on our agenda.
We just ask them to get back to our office, and I give them a date, and if they don't, they don't. And I report to you that we have pursued the report. There's no statutory requirement that the town could do, there's only official review of the application.
Right, and there's no statutory requirement here, it's our requirement.
Correct, but staff does that. So, I think, you know, the failure of the Natural Resources Commission to report prior
How about within 30 days of receipt of application? Because that's when we typically have to... Ours is based on receipt of application.
So, does that mean when we receive it, it automatically gets referred to them?
Yes.
So now they're reviewing everything that we do also?
They're reviewing that part.
So, we're also like, failure of the Natural Resources Commission to report part two or that any public hearing or within 30 days of receipt of the application, in the event no area of this stuff.
That sounds great to me. Is this table comfortable with that? One more thing, and then I'll get back to you, Brian, on the section.
I actually might say, why don't we take the public hearing part out, because as you said, within 30 days.
Great.
Could be sooner. You have 60 days to hold a public hearing schedule, so...
You're right. Okay. Last thing that I think we wanted to address here was the definition of who is qualified to author an environmental impact assessment. Now, we took some time to reference other town land use regulations and kind of do a bit of research here in the break. And I might suggest that, at least for now, we require that the authors or contributors to the environmental impact assessment hold an appropriate professional credential accreditation or certification. Looking at this list, there are a lot of different kinds of scientists who may need to weigh in based on the features of the land. And I don't think that we should, you know, limit ourselves to a particular genre of scientist. But I think that holding a professional credential accreditation or certification gives us confidence that, you know, they know what they're doing. So that the authors or contributors to the environmental impact assessment hold an appropriate professional credential accreditation or certification.
Can we say that the... Read something like, the evaluation shall be prepared by an appropriate professional
Yeah, I would say prepared by, but also, I could see these kind of having multiple contributors. So I would want to... I'd want to have the contributors be credentialed as well. So that we hear from the spotted owl person, you know, as the wetland scientist. How does this table feel about that? Nodding. Now we're at the last thing, which is the concern that Brian raised. Do we need to move where this is in the regulations? I don't necessarily feel that we need to, because I think it's like a median enough section on its own. But certainly, it doesn't, you know, all the qualifications would be in there, so. Okay. Good? You good?
Good.
Okay. Okay. So, it is 8:53. I think that we have addressed our concerns and the concerns raised by the public, but prior to closing the public hearing, is there anything else that needs to be discussed? General survey? Okay.
I'll be very brief while we're wrapping up. Brian Lipkowski, 27 Green Valley Lakes Road. Appreciate the thoughtfulness that you guys are showing and the consideration for all of these things. A couple of things I just wanted to add very quickly is that the ERT is a specific agency. And I think that to bolster this and these changes that you guys are proposing, I think that you should first determine who or what agency is going to be performing this review, and specifically list them in the regulations, the same way they are now, how the ERT is not ambiguous, it is an agency. I would determine that and add that into there. A proposed idea is deep, might be able to do this. You know, being from the state, it would be obviously quite impartial with, you know, really no slight one way or the other. I would request or reach out to them to see if that's a possibility, and possibly have that language in there, or someone, you know, it may be an either-or kind of situation, use them as the first, and let them, if they, you know, are not able to conduct it or decline, then perhaps add some other language in there for another specific one. It's kind of maybe, you know, giving an applicant a little bit greater opportunity in the instance that, you know, they're tied up, their calendar is full, or anything like that. The second thing is that when you're discussing the eligibility or the, you know, the wetlands and things of that nature, and the timeline for the applicants, doing all of their due diligence beforehand is paramount, because there are lots of things that only occur specific times of the year. I'm getting into inland wetlands a little bit here, but I understand that they're also revising their regulations and including quite a bit of language for vernal pools, which is a very specific thing that occurs during very specific seasons. And depending on the time that that review is conducted, that isn't something you may have the advantage or the opportunity to evaluate. So, in instances, which is pretty much most of our undeveloped land at this point, where there are wetlands and the high probability of vernal pools, it's important for the applicants to have gone through that entire process and make sure that your language also coincides with the inland wetland regulations for that as well. I would probably go as far as to suggest including vernal pools as part of the language. They are a intermittent type of situation that sometimes can be misinterpreted. Is it a wetland, is it not a wetland, and it can kind of get messy. There's a very voluminous record about that, if you want to look back in Twin Valley, about what constitutes a vernal pool and what does not, and a debate that basically had the whole room spinning between two soil scientists. So, I think that that is an important thing to add as well. And I appreciate your efforts tonight, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, with that, I am going to close the public hearing. Okay, we do have two municipal referrals to discuss.
Do you need to motion to pause?
Oh, do I? Yeah, I do. Oh!
Motion to close public hearing.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Sue. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. I think that we may be ready to make a... Yes, I know. I think we may be ready to make a decision on this tonight, but I'd like to propose that we entertain the municipal referrals first because of the time.
So I'll take a motion to take the municipal referral ahead of further discussion deliberation on this matter. Any motion?
Please.
So I'm going to move to adjust the schedule to take the municipal referrals prior to deliberations on this matter.
All second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. Thank you.
This won't be nearly as interesting, but anyway. As you know, we are, right now, Board of Selectmen give me the authority to sign a contract to purchase the property being offered up on Hathaway Farms, the properties up in Asagachi Hills and Ravens Woods or the property at the end of Brainerd Road. One of the things I need to do is get, we need to do is along in the process, is make sure that we get the endorsement here from the Planning Commission. I gave you a handout on page one, or actually it says page two. Hathaway Farms, it's approximately, oh, you've got it there. 114 acres. Asagachi Hills is five parcels, actually five parcels that compromise 134 acres, but some of that is under a conservation easement, so it's not even included in this, 119. And Brainerd Road, Ravens Woods, for 22.2 acres. Next slide. Remaining parcels of Hathaway Farms, and we'll see a map on that shortly. You went too far. You're zipping through here. But anyway. Anyway, it's located northwest corner of Patagonia Lake. We're getting approximately 114 acres. The land trust purchased Hathaway Farms LLC from Hathaway Farms LLC for approximately $2.3 million in 2022. And this goes after basically a history of Hathaway Farms. The entire parcel was 138 acres purchased by Hathaway Farms LLC for $1,050,000. In April of 2022, 9.9 acres on the lake, lakefront access were purchased by a private sale for $649,000. The family that purchased that is putting a conservation easement on that. September of 2022, 6.6 acres were transferred from Hathaway Farms LLC to Portside Holdings and English Harbor Capital Partners, which are related entity to Hathaway Farms, and no purchase price was indicated. And then the remaining 122 acres were sold to the Eastlime Land Trust by Hathaway Farms LLC for $2.3 million. And the caveat in the purchase agreement regarding reversions parcels back to Hathaway Farms totaling 12.6 acres, leaving approximately 114 acres. The next slide, and this has always been the number one parcel that, for purchase by the town for open space. This is what is identified as the piece of property. But the next slide will show you what we'll be getting. The Xs are what we will not be getting. According to our appraiser, all the lakefront area is gone except for up the tributary, which is overgrown, some buildable lots on Scott Road, an area where the X is sort of in the middle, which would be for the Hathaway family. So those are property, the part that's cut out, so that's the area we get. According to the appraiser, some of the area, if you look at like the northwest area, could support about 29 to 30 private homes, the topography and so forth like that, and the incline in the southeastern area is not developable. Moving on, Asagachi Hills, specified parcels that were being offered were conveyed to the Eastlime Land Trust in 2023 to be preserved as open space. Parcel A, which we'll see in just a minute, is deed restricted. That was Mr. Peck, Norm Peck Jr., that's writing the deed that it has to remain open space. Parcel B is not specified as being purchased for open space. It's about 88-plus acres, but due to its topography, ravines, it would be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to develop. Part C is, has a conservation easement. That's one off on Damon Heights, so that can't be developed. And our appraiser found parts, parcels D, E, and F undevelopable. Next one, next slide. Currently, there are numerous hiking trails in use in Asagachi Hills Nature Preserve, including parcel B. That's that big, what the Mitchell Trust gave. And it says in the, if you look at the documentation, it says open spacer, but when it was conveyed to the land trust, it did not specify it had to stay that way, which is why they were able to put it up for collateral. And right now, what I also there is Asagachi Hills Nature Preserve Management Plan, which the land trust is parcel to, as well as a couple of other town, as well as the nature preserve. Nature Preserve is to be used for the benefit, enjoyment of the people of the state of Connecticut and the general public. The uses and management practices of management preserve will be those which will not compromise the natural, historical, aesthetic, watershed or biological significance of the property. And this property was used as collateral by the land trust to secure Hathaway Farms LLC. The next one shows you, the red area there is the parcel that was Glenn Russo's property. So that is not up there. The green is what is owned by the town. Parcel A is the deed restricted one there. That has to stay open space. Part B is open to, is, Mitchell property is about 88 acres and there's ravine topography, but many of our trails, as Greg and Chris, you know for fact, many of the trails that we enjoy up in Asagachi Hills go through there. And if it was not something we were able to obtain, it was foreclosed on, it couldn't be developed, as they said it could be the land trust, but I do believe they could deny access to it, so we don't want to see that happen. And part C, D, E, and F are not developable. And all the green is what we have there. The Brainerd Road property is the next. It's one parcel of land, approximately 22 acres. It was deeded to the land trust for open space in 2022. Here again, to be maintained as open space, but there's nothing in the specific paperwork and deed restrictions that says they couldn't do this. This property is also used as collateral by the land trust to secure Hathaway Farms LLC. And currently, there are numerous trails accessible from Brainerd Road, Giant's Neck Beach and Giant's Neck Heights. There's trails up there, a lot of good pictures and so forth like that. So these are the, and there's a parcel of it right there, that little red area. The thing is with this, right now, this parcel, if you could access it through either oakwood or marsh, marsh fillers, so forth like that, they would have access to utilities, water and so forth like that, so this would be highly desirable for being developed. And right now, it is enjoyed by a lot of people right now at the end of Brainerd Road and coming in through there. This was appraised at $125,000. The appraiser said if you extended a road into there where you could get sewage, not sewage so much, but water and so forth in there, it'd be highly, the price would go up significantly. So we're looking to get the endorsement from the Planning Commission to say you agree that these, you know, preserving these as open space would meet with the plan of conservation and development. And any other questions? Here again, the price we've offered is two point, I didn't put all the financials in here. Oh. No, you did. You downloaded. That's fine. This is what the appraised value of it was, 2.295. We have offered 2.25. We're, that's where I've been authorized to enter into an agreement with the land trust. We're still working out some details from their end. And that there is a $400,000 grant. There's some specificity to this as well. We have about $220,000 in our open space account. We would like to use 200,000 of that towards the purchase price, as well as roughly, there's a $400,000 grant that the land trust got to purchase Hathaway Farms several years ago in 2020, before everything started with it being sold to Hathaway Farms LLC. And that is conditioned upon that being able to be transferred to us as well. So we're looking at an out-of-pocket cost to the town. We need to figure closing costs and so forth, about 1.75 million. And here again, the hope is if we can work out all the details and get all, everything done, is to go to a public hearing on the 27th of this month. The Board of Selectmen would take action after that. Then within a couple of days, the Board of Finance would refer it and hopefully approve it and send it back to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Finance is, can the town afford it? That's their role. And then would things go according to what we're hoping, August, October 4th? The Board of Selectmen will set a town meeting, which will adjourn to a ballot referendum, and there'd be a town-wide vote on roughly the 17th of October. That's the timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay.
So much. Any questions?
No, I know in the plan of conservation development, Hathaway Farms is the number one area listed, and of course, Asagachi Hills was also discussed. I don't know, I'm not sure about Brainerd, but.
Brainerd Road, so what's interesting is the Asagachi Hills piece of the Brainerd Road already show up in our appeals, and it is being, as existing of this place.
Yeah.
But there were some caveats, as you heard in the first argument, to get that they're not necessarily preserved. So we identified thinking they were preserved, and it was not. So I would indicate, in my opinion, would be that it would be favorable and consistent for those to be.
Yeah, if this is not one of the easiest votes we have, can I make a motion that we find this plan to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just one last thing. The town's intent is to make sure this is placed as open space in perpetuity. And, you know, your regulations state we can give it to you, but it has to stay as open space forever, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thanks for your patience.
Oh, no problem.
Longer night than you probably anticipated.
That's right. I'm proud of you on that.
Okay. Do we want to do? That's what I'm wondering. Subdivision or referral?
We should do the subdivision regulations and then.
And then the referral. Fine with me.
Motion was not, it was only for this, right?
Yes.
My motion was only for.
Okay.
The motion, you take, is that worth?
Did it apply to just municipal referral A?
I took it as a general.
Sorry.
Could we entertain another motion? I'd like to move that we return back to our discussion and decision on the Eastlime subdivision regulation revisions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Please.
For the environmental impact statement in regard to the accreditation. So we should read something like, and I think, I've heard the term environmental impact assessment and environmental impact statement. There is a difference.
Yeah.
That being said, I like the word environmental impact statement. This would read the environmental impact statement and shall be prepared by any individual who holds an appropriate professional credential accreditation or certification to perform such assessments or such evaluations, such support.
So we do call it an assessment at that subhead? Environmental impact assessment? But your wording says both, so I think it's fine. Oh, it was one down from there. So it's.
I should use this one, because it's much easier to follow.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of that, too. It's the next one. That one.
So we can change that to statement, but be comfortable with assessment. I'll keep it consistent throughout that to perform such assessment. I think Brian's comment was, was there some criteria that they follow? So there is criteria for that, that these assessments are prepared by, and. It's called the Council on Environmental Impact, SCQ, an office in the executive branch of government, tasked with enforcing the rules that are binding, a typical federal environmental impact statement, which is. So there are standards that they have, that they have to follow. I guess, do we want to discuss what those standards are?
You mean refer to what you just said?
Correct. So environmental impact statements do have basis for being, there's criteria for them. So I don't know, we should throw back to that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense where we also require the, you know, professional credential accreditation or certification.
If I can point out one thing, Madam Chair. I'm on the ct.gov website, just because I was interested in seeing what it took to have a license or certification to do that sort of work. So Connecticut Department of Public Health has a ELCP environmental laboratory certification program. I just wanted to point that out, that there is, they have some certifications. I don't know if we want to refer to that or not.
I think there are several. I also was looking at, there's accreditation through the Institute of Environmental Management and Assessment. I think there are several. And to our earlier point, I hesitate to be too limiting because that's how we got ourselves into it with the ERT. Knowing that we can require peer review at our discretion of these accredited experts.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns I had too is when, when we're presented with an impact assessment or statement, we have the right to discredit it. Would say that if it's not from a credible source, can we at that point deny?
Yeah. And we can, and we can request our own peer review of that. Per the fee, yeah, that's when we talk about the fee schedule, we request an additional evaluation. It's passed through to the applicant.
So if someone's using like a wish.com environmental assessor, we can be like, no.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the language that I had is good.
It's good.
Any other discussion? All right. I'll open it up. Anyone ready to make a motion? Okay, I'll move that we approve the revisions to the Eastlime subdivision regulations, which would become effective December 1, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Are you sure? You want to abstain?
I think I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So we have five ayes and one abstention. So we have five ayes and one abstention. That takes us back yet again to municipal referrals. Item B. A referral from the town of Eastlime to review a proposal for pickleball courts at Perez Park at Bridebrook. Here, we're looking to determine whether this proposal is consistent or inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development.
We have a memo from our new director, Derek Locan, and looking to propose pickleball courts, appearing on the map. See there is the area, know where the basketball courts, existing courts are, and propose to create these courts. Again, as you know, Bridebrook is an existing recreational park, it's an easy one, just expand recreational uses at the park. I don't think it's going to generate any more traffic than what already uses the park. I think I've seen it out there playing pickleball on the.
Any discussion or questions? Yeah, agreed. Questions, discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that it is consistent with the PSCD.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. We do not have any older new business tonight, so I'd like to move that we adjourn. Ah, I would not like to adjourn. Take that back.
He's got something. What do you got?
Okay.
Sorry, you talked.
I would like to move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Meeting adjourned at 9:20 PM.